Want to call the meeting to order, East Greenwood Central School District Board Meeting for May 25. This evening, board members in attendance, all board members are in attendance except for Mr. Yabo has a previous commitment. So with that, if you could all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. I do want to take this time to ask for a moment of silence to honor those who tragically lost their lives in both Buffalo and Texas recently. So if you could join me in a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll move forward our meeting with Ryan is here joining us and I'm sure we'll have more things to talk about regards the events that happened.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Emma could not be with us tonight unfortunately, but I'm here. So Student Council has earned a $500 scholarship from the Red Cross due to the numerous blood drives that we've had this year, and I'm sure for me to talk about and the number of donors we've had. Student Council elections are currently being held and we will be announcing the results tomorrow afternoon after all voting has ended and we would like to wish all the candidates the best of luck. All of the Executive Council officers visited golf last Thursday to speak with eighth grade student council members about Student Council at Columbia and about transitioning to the high school. Junior prom was hosted two weekends ago in the CHS Gymnasium and the senior prom will be hosted on Friday, June 10th at the Desmond Hotel. The Colombian award ceremony will also be hosted on June 10th in the morning and we are currently preparing for that. And after months of planning, actually really years of planning and working with the administration, we are very happy to announce that Student Council will be hosting its first and hopefully first annual field trip to Six Flags New England on June 2nd to reward our members for a lot of hard work. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. Very nice. We'll be on to our next agenda topic is the minutes. We have the draft minutes from April 26th. Mark and Joanne were not there, correct? Any questions or comments on the minutes? Oops. Seeing none, need a motion to approve the minutes. John, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All those abstaining? I thought that I saw you were late. That's it. April 26th? Five, four, you're out. Yes, next one. We got those two. Okay, so five, four meeting, we had two, we had the public hearing. Michelle was out. Any questions, comments, or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? All those abstaining? One approved. And again, the draft minutes for the regular meeting on May 4th. Questions, comments, or revisions? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those. John, I need a second. Joanne, those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next item on the agenda is the board forum. I'll start on my left with Cheryl. All good? John? Mark? Jennifer?
I had a couple of things. One, I didn't know, I know I've, I think I've mentioned this before, but I'm curious about the Rensselaer County moving over here. And if we as a board or as a district have gotten any information, the county office building moving over here, I mean, and I'm just curious how that going off the tax rolls will affect our taxpayers. So I don't know if we've gotten any info about that. The second thing, I was talking to Mr. Reagan earlier, if there's any talk about the Janey track and like how that in terms of ownership, the track itself, you know, up above the field there is in terrible shape. So I don't know if that's a possibility for a future project and maybe it's owned by Pop Warner. I don't know, but just to kind of put it out there, I think that would be a good project.
Okay, so.
We'll have to research both those issues.
Definitely we'll get back to them.
Directly on the county office building, but we'll research it.
It's on the papers, about it right now. Good. Thank you, Jennifer. Kathleen? And Joanne? I have nothing to. Move to our public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operation of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business form is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly, efficient operation of our business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this time? Anyone?
Sorry, I'm still catching my breath. Just came in. My name is Mary Cray Letter. I've been an employee of the district for seven years. Lifelong resident of the district. And alumni of the school. I just had some words I wanted to say. Some comments, questions, and concerns. First, I may be the only one that feels this way, but I may not be. I feel you're failing your transportation department. Why didn't you question the abolishing of a longstanding position within our district? Was it because there were recommendations made that you had full trust in the individual or people wanting to eliminate those positions? Have you gone complacent and think things are running smoothly? If so, that is how you're failing your transportation department. We have been running without a supervisor, an actual in-house supervisor, not just an individual that says they are acting supervisor that you never see for nearly six months now. We have somehow managed to get the kids to and from school, to sports events, and back, all with barely any assistance, positive assistance, I should say. You should be able to walk into your workplace and be happy to be there, not walk into it and feel the tension or the anxiety in the air. That's pretty much just what I wanted to say. Still trying to catch my breath. I just ran from the park not up here. But I just feel going into work isn't what it used to be. Recommending the positions to people to come work for this district isn't what it used to be. There has been a lot of changes, I know with COVID, but a lot of changes just this year alone in the transportation department. And it doesn't feel like things are being communicated to the body as a whole. We feel like outsiders to the rest of the district, in a sense. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. So the district is looking into all this. We're in a position where we're trying to, everyone has gone through very challenging times and we recognize and have heard from the transportation department previously. And we are working through the issues and trying to do the best we can to make sure it's the best running department. So people will be in touch with you, I'm sure, about how things unfold in the transportation department. But we're looking to make sure that everyone feels they're heard, that communication is open. And continue to work with the transportation department and leadership there to make sure that things get back on track. Okay?
That'd be greatly appreciated. And if we have leadership there, because it's, our office staff are great. They're great. But we do not have a supervisor.
But we're working through that. So, okay, thank you. Anyone else that can address the board? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the reports and presentations from the golf science Olympiad and the recognition of their success. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bino. We have had a very successful Science Olympiad program, both at Golf Middle School and Columbia High School, but this evening, we're going to be recognizing the accomplishments of the Golf Middle School Science Olympiad team who placed third in the New York State Championships this year. Even during COVID, when we weren't able to have in-person competition, we were able to do some virtual work last year. But it's really exciting that this year we had full Science Olympiad program going at golf under the direction of Donna Marie Leeg, who is a science teacher. And I want to ask Donna Marie to come up at this point to the microphone to help us celebrate, understand, and appreciate the work of the Golf Science Olympiad program.
Thank you very much.
Before you start, I want to give you a round of applause for all the work you've done. So I'm excited. Take it away, Marie.
Thank you. My assistant coach, Mr. Hudson, is running to golf because we forgot one thing. And so hopefully he'll be back in time. Can I take? Okay, thank you. So I do want to say that two years ago in March, right before COVID, our Science Olympiad team was really poised to possibly win the New York State Championship. So we had just come off a competition at Cornell University where we placed third, but we were only the second, we were the second highest team in New York State, only beat by Paul Jelineus, which seemed to be our nemesis our entire, like my entire career in Science Olympiad. They were always first or second. And when we got second and went to Nationals, they were first. So they were always like our nemesis. And we had just come off a really great win and then we went into COVID. And COVID really disappointed my kids. They were very sad that we weren't going to go to States. And but yet they like rose to the challenge and that was great. Last year was a difficult year being everything was virtual. We had virtual tournaments. We had virtual practices. So it was really hard to feel like a team together. But we tried our best and we did a lot of Google meets and we like practiced and did well. And even though it was a virtual state tournament, we ended up being ninth in the state, which was really due to a glitch in the programming, but it was okay. We were still in the top 10. This year, we kind of came back with a new vigor and them knowing that I was going to be retiring, they wanted to do well for me. Can you hold on one second? All right. Go out in the hall. Go out in the hall. Sorry, we're trying to pull this together. And so they worked really, really, really hard this year. Just so for those of you who don't know what Science Olympiad is, I know some of you who are sitting here have had children in the program with me. But Science Olympiad is an academic competition team. So there's actually most of the program is academic events. We tend to think of it as building because we can see the building events, but most of the program is really preparing them in an academic way. And so some of the stuff that the students have brought tonight, they're going to show you, they develop binders for some of their events, like rocks and minerals and the birds, where they actually develop their own field guide. So they had to research all of the different rocks or birds on the list and then put them together and make their own field guide. And then they, when they got to the competition, they had to, for the rocks test, they had like 106 or eight samples that they had to identify and answer questions about. It was like two and a half minutes per station. So they had to like know their stuff really well. The birds were the same where they had to like see a picture, know the bird call, know what they do, know their nesting habits, all that stuff. And so that's like some of the academic events. We also have like biology events and chemistry events and physics events as well as our building events. But the building events are more flashy, so they're more fun to see. So we brought some of them to you tonight. But I'm super proud of all these kids. Like I said, most of them were brand new to Science Olympiad this year, or if they did it, they did it virtually. So they had no idea. We had gone to no competition prior to regionals. They kind of learned a lot at regionals, which is why we were second, not first. We had, we had a lot of growing pains there. But they, they learned a lot at regionals and they really pulled themselves together and wanted to be in the top 10. That was our goal. Be in the top 10 and to get a couple medals. And then the, the competition award ceremony was like the most exciting thing because we had no expectations because it was COVID. And so every time they called golf middle schools, like what, what? Oh, my God. Oh, my God. So like everybody was like, like nothing. And then we were like, oh, probably if we're up to third, it's really not us. And then they're like, golf, suck it. You know, like no way. And so like you could ask the parents. I was a little crazy at the award ceremony, jumping up and down and hugging the kids and, and we were just really, really excited about doing so well. Third place was the exact perfect place for us to be and we were extremely happy with that. So I'm very, very proud of all the hard work that Susan did. I'm very thankful for my assistant coaches. Mr. Hudson will be arriving, I'm hoping. Mr. Soren Cioni unfortunately had another commitment tonight, so he's not going to be here with us. But I am so thankful for them and all their hard work that they did as well in supporting me. We couldn't have this program without them. So now I'm going to bring up my two captains. Our third captain is in Florida, I think, right? And so she sends her regrets, but the two captains are Shriya Galala and Alyssa Sense. And then Ariana Baptista, who is not here tonight. So the girls are going to tell you their experience with this program.
Hello and good evening. First, I would like to thank the Board of Education for having our Science Olympiad team today. It is an honor to be here and recognized by the district. Personally, Cy Ollie has had an incredible and positive impact on my life. I've made great friends and practice is a memorable experience. Thanks to the kind donations of parents and Miss Leegs, snacks make practice after a long day more enjoyable and productive. The coaches make us laugh and keep us on task. And we would not be here without our amazing coaches who have encouraged and supported every one of us from day one. And a huge shout out to Miss Leeg, who is the heart of our team and the best coach ever. The truly wonderful part of the middle school Science Olympiad is that it brings this group of students from seventh, eighth, and ninth grade together, and we learn and help each other. I learned so much from the older students I was paired with in seventh and eighth grade. And as an eighth grader, a ninth grader this year, I got to share and teach my knowledge and experience to my partners and teammates. At the end of the day, I cherished and loved the after-school practices and competition, even when they became a tad bit stressful. We have all learned so much from our events in Cy Ollie. And the time and effort spent truly pays off when we win medals at competitions, but also when we learn more about ourselves and make friends with students who show similar interests with us.
I again want to reiterate how much we appreciate your sponsorship and support of the Golf Science Olympiad team. For me, Science Olympiad has given me the chance to form friendships with people I wouldn't have expected to ever hang out with. The teachers and students of Science Olympiad have worked hard to create an environment in which we all feel comfortable and which laughs come easily. Many of the students present today in this room have shown me how despite challenges put in front of them, people of this world are still willing to face them, even with the chaos that have plagued us since COVID times. For many of these students, it was their first year being able to go to any in-person events at all. These events are critical for the ability of members to perform well in the future years. And the fact that these students could achieve all of these medals and high placings in their first year is truly amazing. Science Olympiad has had a huge impact on my life and will continue to be one of my favorite parts of my student career.
Now, we're going to introduce two seventh graders who are going to tell you the meaning of our commemorative state shirt this year. This is a one and a kind. We should, we're always joke around that we should be on eBay and, but they're going to explain the meaning of the shirt. We're going to get, turn it over. This is Sneha and Lila. And Sneha is going to explain it. Lila was actually our designer of the front. And we're going to tell you a little bit about the shirt. Lila is going to be the model.
Okay, so the front of the shirt, like Mrs. Leeg said, I designed, but the crown on top of the trophy is Mrs. Leeg's initials. So that represents how awesome she is because turn around, Sneha. And then the back is from the periodic table of elements and Mrs. Leeg always jokes around with her classes how there should be an element named after her. So we decided to do that for her last year at Science Olympiad since she's retiring. The one on top means she's the number one coach and 25 at the bottom means that those are her 25 years teaching at Golf Middle School.
Lila and Sneha are going to get their car ready to demonstrate for you and we're going to have Ryan bring the mission over and he's going to explain a little bit about what mission is. I'll have him walk around and show you like so that you can see it a little up close and then I'll have him stand in the middle and explain it to you. So just like.
What that should do is it is a series of actions. We would demonstrate it tonight, but we practice for this year. Are not able to. It was our first one that we competed with at regionals. Did not go well. And this one definitely, we got third place in this event, so this one definitely.
In the whole state, third place in the whole state. They spent many hours building it and so on. So he's just to explain to you what actions needed to get done. So go ahead.
So we had to the coordinator of Science Olympiad gave us a list of actions that we had to get points. And we were able to do, I think it was.
We were able to do a decent amount of them and we got around 500 points, which is a very good score in this event. So how it starts off is a marble is dropped into this funnel here. It rolls down where there is a chain of five marbles sitting here. It strikes the first marble in the chain. And the last marble rolls down here, this track. We'll turn it. Rolls down this track and activates this mousetrap, which this rubber band of string is attached to. And there is sand in here that when the string pulls out, this lever stops blocking the sand for funneling down and the sand falls into this cup. And there would be counterweights on this screw. And as the sand gets heavier and heavier, this starts to tip. And once it tips, this hammer falls forward, activates a marble that rolls, hits three dominos. The last one hits another marble, which that marble hits another hammer. And as all of that is going on, the marble that was originally dropped into the funnel is going down this tubing and landing right here. For this hammer to be, to strike it. And when this mousetrap is activated, it pulls a nail out of this post, which is keeping the hammer back. When that nail gets pulled out, the hammer swings and hits the start marble and it rolls.
So the boys design this like themselves because they are just told this is what it has to start with. This is what it has to end with. And you have to have all these actions in between and they get a certain amount of points per action and somehow you have to figure out how to make it work. And so like we spent lots and lots of time. We had a few mentors helping us out. Volunteers in the community came and worked with the boys and we ended up doing really well with their place overall, which is great. Yeah. The girls are going to show the car now and then Jay is going to come back with his plane.
So this was the event mousetrap car and the idea was that we had to have a car powered by a mousetrap, go one meter back and a certain distance forward. So they would give us that distance at the actual event. So we did not know ahead of time. But we did know we have, had to go a meter back. So this was actually not the original design for regionals. We actually did not do this design for regionals. We were put on this for states. So it changed a lot from the original design.
You notice that is a theme in Science Olympiad. Design is never what we end up with. But you can demonstrate it.
Okay, so Sneha will demonstrate.
That it hit it with a pencil to get it started. It had to go back and then forward. Maybe because of the carpet.
Yeah, it doesn't move on carpet. But we would show you. So we would wind a string on a thread spool and we would wind it the two different directions. And as you saw, it would go by itself, but that was the basic idea. We didn't do too well in states, but it did work. We just didn't be some building restrictions, but for the most part, we did pretty good. So yeah.
Great. All right, plane?
Hello, so I'm Avinav and this is my partner Jay. So me and Jay worked on a plane and he'll be going around showing you the plane. So for, it was very hard to build because it was very delicate, you could say. And it took us multiple tries during states. We didn't do as best as we could possibly do, but we still did pretty good. And we would show you how to fly it, but not enough room, so.
Okay, yep. And Shriya is going to show you her rocket, which is also, we can't really do it in here because you need a gym and this is not a gym. And Sophia is going to bring her instrument over while Sophia is showing everyone. And Alyssa is going to come around and show you her bridge. And just kind of demonstrate for you. The bridge had to hold 35 pounds when, when they were doing it. And go ahead, Shriya, you can tell them about the rocket.
So this rocket is for the event ping pong parachute. And so basically we're given specific parameters. So we have to use a bottle that is 16 ounces or less. And using that, we have to create a rocket that will launch a parachute. I do not have the parachute with me right now and I cannot launch it here either. But as you can see, these are all materials that you can find on an everyday basis. It's a soda bottle, cardboard, folders for wings, duct tape, tube lighting, covering, some clay and.
Yeah, and they had a ping pong and a parachute. And as it went up, it released the parachute and it came down. Fourth and mistake. So there's. And then Alyssa is going to show you her bridge.
So right here, I have a bridge design that was made and in regionals, it was first place and it held all of the weight. And this is the one actually from regionals that we saved. And it's made out of balsa and bass wood with cut like really thin so that it will be light and hold the most weight. Because this event is based off of efficiency, which is the weight held divided by the weight of the structure.
So you can see how many grams is that? 10, 12, 12 grams and it had to hold 35 pounds. So if you look very closely at it, it's very, very light. So Logan did terrible in this event at regionals. It didn't even work or shoot or anything. And then at states, he ended up shooting 25 meters, was it? 12 meters.
So the trebuchet in regionals, as previously stated, did horribly because it relied on me tying a knot to set it off and I could not tie a knot. But we revised it and now it is not just a typical trebuchet. It is a floating arm kind of trebuchet. So how it works is, you know, slide it.
You don't have the counterweights here, so they're just going to kind of show you a little bit.
Yeah, whatever. It's close enough. It's good enough. What would happen is you would put the after there, you put the wheels on the tracks and you put it on backwards, but that's okay. Because it would go back this way. And when you put the, all right, counterweight would go on this part here. And when you, when it's all the way down, it would go up. I don't know what's stopping it, but it's probably just because everything's knotted. We would put the, this, the arm down, the, it would go up. The counterweight would pull it and since when it pulls it, it moves the wheels with it, it gives it a little bit of extra oomph to it going whichever way you want it to. And shoots a ball. Yeah, it's kind of, it goes far. It went from zero meters to 12, which would have been the best, but we unfortunately got out of the square.
All right. And then Sophia is going to demonstrate the, we had to make this instrument.
Okay, so this instrument is made out of maple and pine wood. And I was not the one who built it. It was my partner Curialis. And, but I did make these mallets. These mallets are handmade. And the core itself is made out of a wine cork. And they are glued onto this wooden rod with wind, wine, yarn. Yarn and it was twined around the wine cork. And okay, so we used the maple wood and pine wood and also some bits of wood from the original instrument, because this was not the original. This was a new design that we developed for this.
All right, you're good.
Great.
Sophia is going to play for us.
Now I'm a little rusty since I haven't played in months.
And we won't hold you too much longer, but the last thing is going to be the girls are going to walk around and Ryan and show you their binders and Lily and Piper are going to talk a little bit about their binder. But you guys walk around and show them your bird's binder while the girls talk about your binders.
So for our rocks and minerals binder, we had a long list of rocks, very long, that we had to compile into a binder and a field guide. And it took much collaboration and time. Many late night printing sessions. And we browsed the internet for lots of information and different pictures and and different facts about rocks and minerals.
And they also had to memorize what all the rocks look like. So besides putting this together, they had to identify them by sight. So, yep. So would you like me to have the team come stand behind me? All right. Could everyone, while they're walking around, come stand behind me? Including our assistant coach. And we have to recognize Mr. Hudson because he's the awesome assistant coach.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Lee to come forward and Mr. Bino to come up here. And we're going to invite all of the team members when Mrs. Lee calls your name to come forward and receive a certificate of recognition for your outstanding achievement. Not only during the New York State Championships, but also through your engagement for the entire year and even last year when you were involved. And we appreciate everything that you do to learn science, to apply your knowledge, to do it in a fun manner. And we appreciate Ms. Lee and all of your advisors and we have a certificate for each of them as well. So I'm going to hand these to Mr. Buno. And if, when you come up one at a time, receive your certificate, shake our hands and you can go back with your group and then we're going to present the certificates to the advisors.
Okay, the first one up is Abinav. Ariana Baptista is not here today, but we can recognize her. Next one is Ryan Ecker, eighth grader. Abinav was also an eighth grader. Eighth grader Piper Gentiel. Ninth grader Captain Shriya Galala. Seventh grader Sneha Gopina. Jocelyn Huesis is ninth grader. She's also not here tonight. Eighth grader Lily Larson. Eighth grader Manya Madden. Seventh grader Lila McGuffin. Eighth grader Logan Messina. Eighth grader Jay Mian. Eighth grader Curialis Rivera. Ninth grader Captain Alyssa Sense. Ninth grader, or sorry, eighth grader Hayya Shah. And we are lucky to have both Hayya and her sister Uma Isashah. And ninth grader Sophia Chow.
We also want to thank the advisors, the coaches. It is not only a lot of hard work for our students, but it is also a lot of work for our coaches. And we recognize that this is a huge time commitment. Not only on the part of the students, but on Mrs. Lee's part and our coaches. So we're going to recognize Ms. Lee first because she is standing right here at 25 oh, right? And we want to also congratulate her on her years of dedication and service to our children in learning science, developing a passion for science. And we will miss you and we wish you well in your retirement. I think you mentioned that Mr. Sorentoni is not here tonight. All right, Zach Hudson is here. Mr. Hudson? And Gillian Campos. Is Gillian here? One last word and I want to pass the microphone to Mr. Buno if he wants to say anything. This is a big commitment on the part of the parents and the guardians and the families. And it's a lot of time after your regular school work is done, doing extra work for this, this program. I appreciate your commitment, your passion for supporting your kids' learning. It's really tremendous that you're all here to celebrate with them tonight. This is really a nice program that we have and it's a statewide recognized program. So we wouldn't be able to do it without the kids. We wouldn't be able to do it without the coaches and we wouldn't be able to do it without the parents and the guardians supporting their children. So thank you.
So I want to echo Mr. Simons. Thank you for, and congratulations representing the district very well. And as Mr. Simon says, I behind all of you is a caregiver, a parent, someone who's been special to help you get to this point in your lives. And I want to thank them for all their support in making this a great school community and so well represented from the talent that's here and you're going to do great things. So congratulations again and and congratulations to the parents and guardians. Everyone's here to support them. So thank you.
We have a very interesting set of topics and items on the board agenda for the rest of the evening. We know you want to stay till nine, nine thirty tonight. Just kidding. You are free to leave. Congratulations and enjoy your evening.
It's always an honor and a privilege to have our, our students here and what makes the work that we do have meaning and the support that we get and the the time that we put in to see the students and the efforts that they've made and the successes they had. And the trying and the failure and the trying again and just persistence is just really great to see. So great presentation. I'm glad we took the time to, to honor and recognize them. Next item on their agenda is the discussion items of the board of a meeting schedule. Any comments, questions, board members on the meetings for next year?
We were looking for some feedback on July in the event that the meeting calendar doesn't work for anyone. We are under New York State Education law required to have the organizational meeting on the first Tuesday, the Thursday of the first week of the month. However, the board can through a resolution change that as long as the meeting occurs before the 15th. So if that presents a conflict and we can't have a quorum, we can always bring a resolution to our last meeting in June and change that. The other consideration we have is regarding board members, vacations and so forth. So if the 27th doesn't work, we could, we could potentially change that to the the week of the 11th.
Of July?
Of July.
How are the board members for July 5th? It's the day after a holiday. We have enough? We'll have enough. You love Emily. The 27th, I'm not here. I would appreciate a break if we want to just not have a meeting, if that's possible.
We could have one meeting, both the organizational meeting and a regular agenda meeting on the 5th and just have one meeting that month. If everybody's agreeable to that. I know you're disappointed.
Joanne, you have something? The 5th? Okay, well, we'll get you in the next. So we'll go. That's right. When you're not here, you know what happens. So we'll go with July 5th. No meeting on the 27th. If there's a need for anything from a personnel wise or things like that to me, we'll just amist the board and see if we have to meet, but let's take a little bit of time off for the summer and enjoy a little bit of a break. Thanks, everybody. I did notice too, one, the November 23rd is a Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Are we in session? It is a session day. I see the calendar.
It is a school, it is a school day. We can change it if you'd like.
Maybe to the 22nd, the Tuesday. I know some people travel and go away and so maybe Tuesday.
We'll move that to the Tuesday. That works for everybody.
Works, yeah. Anything else? Any comments in the rest of the meetings? All right. So a few changes there and we'll move forward. The next discussion item is the Santa Rubin Construction Management Services Extension of Capital Project Work. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Buno. Dave Hollander is the president of Santa Rubin Construction, which is our construction management firm. And he's joined this evening by Tom Siriani, who's been our project manager over the course of the last several months. He has taken over for Lynn Ellsworth, who retired. He worked side by side with Lynn for some time. And they're here to present kind of an update to the board regarding the status of our project and how it impacts their construction management contract. There's a need based on the fact that the project has extended beyond its original timeline through various factors that they will talk about to, to do a change order at a future meeting. But we wanted the board to understand some of the issues that were involved, how the structure of Santa Rubin services is contracted with the district. Some of the particulars about what delays occurred within the project. So I'm going to turn this over to Dave and Tom to kind of run through a document, which we provided you with a hard copy. And there's also one on board docs. I guess we'll start with Dave. Thank you for being here.
It works. Good evening. As Mr. Simon said, I'm Dave Hollander, president of Santa Rubin Construction. And Tom Siriani is the project manager for the capital project. Good evening. You've all seen the documents given that. One of us, Tom, to do is walk through. Really, there's three reasons why the project has been extended. If you look at the chart, the timeline chart, you can, you can, I think it's a good graphical representation of really the timeline of the initial project as planned and the actual dates that have unfolded now over five years, right? So why don't you go through?
And some of this is what was planned versus what's actual, as Dave has mentioned. One of the first items here is the SED approval timeframe where it was projected in our original proposal and our staffing was based on a certain amount of time, a few months to get through the SED design review process. And what we found as, as each phase went in for review, it took much longer. 180 days sometimes to one year for a couple of the phases. So that, that prolonged the project and the timing of when each phase was able to go out to bid. So our services continued through that extended amount of time as we worked with the design team in the district to prepare the next phases. However, it's, it's continuous into another year of the project.
So graphically, if you look at the chart, you can see that the top light blue line goes from, what would that be? That would be May of 2017 to, to the middle of 2019. The whole project was supposed to be done on that top line. And the delay right off the bat, unfortunately, was it the approval got stuck in New York State SED review. So you can see when it, when it came out, design and review, we had already used up a lot of the planned time. The actual got extended.
So that's one of the major reasons. The next was a couple of added emergency projects that came about during the course of the capital project. One for the piping and insulation replacement at Gulf Middle School that has just started in the last couple of weeks. That's, that's been built into this request for additional staffing and some additional time. Because it is an added site to the stage of the project that we're in, there is some additional staffing to, to manage that project. And as well as running concurrently with it, it's the emergency project at the transportation center for the underground fuel tank replacement to an above ground fueling station that's also in progress right now. Next was COVID-19, just extending some of the projects here and the timing of when projects were out to bid and what could have been anticipated for the bid results to come in. So the project team working with the district and the district's architects strategically made some decisions to withhold a few scopes of work to bid out at a later date. Depending on where the major scopes of the projects would come in. So that being the phase two roofing, the Gulf Middle School roofing project and Green Meadow. And then the Columbia High School lighting control replacement. So with them being bid out at a later date, it is pushing the construction to go beyond the with them being bid out at a later date, it is pushing the construction to go beyond the original timeframe that we based our staffing plan on. So and then with that, the, the phase two roofing, which was bid out at a later date, the materials were not available last summer, pushing that project into this year. So that's all the, the major scopes of the, the initial capital project. And then fortunately, we found that with the bid results that have come in on the original project, there is a project savings and some funds still available to get capital improvements done within the district. And we're already starting to work on that with a fire alarm replacement project here at Columbia High School. And then still to be determined with some additional projects next summer. So again, this wasn't originally anticipated in our staffing plan. But we would look to continue to provide these services for the district into next summer.
So Jeff mentioned, Mr. Simons, excuse me, mentioned our contracts. I just want to make a note on the structure of our construction management contract with the district. Our contract really is comprised of two parts. First part is a staffing component. And then the second part is a fee component. And we, that's really our, our profit, right? So the staffing component, the way it's structured is it's cost incurred. So it, we don't bill you for time not expended. We only bill you for time expended in the project. That's why Tom is forecasting in one of your sheets. He shows you a budget there. There is, there are remaining funds through August. And then with the additional work and the extension, we're requesting reimbursement for staff only. We are not asking for additional fee. Our theory is, well, if we had done this in a shorter time period, it's essentially the same scope of work. So we're not asking for additional fee. We're just asking to be compensated for the additional time we need to be on campus across the district to manage the work for in your interest. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Pretty clear? I thought the, the other document that outlined all the different items is
Paul Beckles did that for us.
Yeah, it aligns with this, all the work that was done over those phases. Very helpful as well. So thank you for that. In addition to the the timeline, it was very helpful to kind of gauge and see, you know, what I thought, right? This amount of time would have to, for this kind of construction project. So.
There has been expedited reviews requested from SED. However, they, they didn't turn out to be less time. The construction timeframes is still held for the most part to what was originally planned. However, it's, it's the review time that's really impacted the time here. We have seen very favorable bid results. Fortunately, during that time, contractors that started the project are seeing cost escalations and we've seen some change orders for some of those things, what they bid on originally and where the prices are going. There's some cost escalations coming in for asphalt prices. So, but it hasn't been major. Most of it's been favorable to the project and the district.
In addition, we may only do a couple of things that we had planned on, which is good.
The fire and the smoke alarm system here is functional. It works. It meets the requirements to have a certificate of occupancy, et cetera. But what we found is based on the age of the system, the parts are hard to get and they're very expensive. So some, I'll ask Paul to give the example that he gave me the other day. Something that would typically cost around sixty dollars is costing around five hundred dollars because of the old age of the system.
Good evening. Yeah, so that just recently came up. What we found out is the system that services our fire alarm systems, fire security and sound came to us just recently when we had to replace a smoke head here. And unfortunately, the smoke head is no longer available. They stopped making the parts approximately a year ago. A lot of these systems are designed so that they only function with their own parts through the same manufacturer. So you can't put a GE smoke head with our system and make it work properly. So being that they stopped making those parts, unfortunately, the only thing available on the market right now to keep this fire alarm system going in this particular building is new old stock and the new old stock prices are going through the roof, unfortunately. To find the smoke head that went bad the other day, F S N S actually had to find it on eBay and we paid about five hundred and fifty dollars for it. A smoke head typically costs fifty to eighty dollars, somewhere in that range. And not just escalating costs of those parts, but it's also they're diminishing. So as they get used up, eventually they'll be gone. So we were very fortunate to have enough funding left over in the capital project after we did our due diligence and, you know, have slowly worked through this process and had favorable returns to have the money to do this. This project will cost close to one million dollars. And unfortunately, it takes a big chunk out of the piece that we had hoped to do some other smaller projects with, but because it's a health and life safety system, we have no choice. I think we're fortunate that we can do it through a capital project. I don't know how it would have been foreseen by SED if we had tried to do it as an emergency project. The system is really only about fifteen years old, but unfortunately they stopped making it. So, yeah, we, we kind of fell in the middle on that, but we are lucky to have the funds to be able to do it. Right now, just so you guys have an idea and timeframes, our architect is working on getting some drawings together. Those will go to SED for hopefully a rush review and we're hopeful. I've already talked to F S N S. We're hopeful to possibly get the system installation underway in the fall, starting after, after school hours in the fall. So that's, that's the hope at this point. And once we have real numbers on that, that'll be state contract work. So we'll be able to get a number right away and work with F S N S on that. And then the culmination of that and the recent lighting project that was bid out, we'll have a better idea as to what funds we have left to do some of the other things. It'll be a smaller pot unfortunately, but we still hope we can get some, some things done that are on the wish list. Any questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the discussion items is the K eight summer school update.
I'd ask Mr. McHugh to provide us with a report on the status of our summer school planning. We were able to fund summer school last year at the K for general education, extra support. And we're doing that again through the federal programs this year.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Just a brief update. The K summer school program is going to start on Tuesday, July fifth. It'll run through Friday, July twenty ninth. The start time is eight forty-five AM. It'll go the student academic day until eleven forty-five AM. It'll be at Columbia High School. We staggered the time from the twelve month extended school program. The K five program is going to focus on ELA math and social emotional learning. The six eight program will focus on the four cores, English, math, science, social studies with social emotional learning also being covered. When we talk about social emotional learning, we're talking about universal delivery. So we're not talking about small groups. We're talking about our school social worker actually going into those classrooms and providing some universal instruction on SEL. Relationship building, encouraging positive self-talk, social awareness, persevering, managing feelings, managing good choices. Prior to the start of our K eight Elevate Summer Program, our teachers will be participating in a four hour professional development session that will be at Questor Three Voces. That is tentatively scheduled for July first. And our teachers will also participate in a professional learning community one day a month on at one o'clock in the afternoon after the academic day has concluded. Enrollment's changing all the time. We're doing our best to serve our families and students. So last week we had a hundred and eighty-six students enrolled. As of today, we're up to one hundred and ninety-nine. The average class size, we try to keep it to ten to twelve students for the summer program. Internally, we had twenty-two of our teachers apply. All twenty-two of the teachers that applied would be offered a position, have been offered a position. They may not have been the ideal grade that they wanted to work. We currently have six unfilled positions. Our HR department has posted for those positions. We have twenty applicants, external applicants. And we are looking to interview external candidates on May thirty-first. Any questions? Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Jim. Moving on to the regular business, we have the district voting results from May seventeenth. Any questions on those? Why are we, quicker? We, we good? Alright. Need a motion to accept those results? Kathleen, need a second? Michelle, those in favor? Approved. We have the change order, phase three construction project. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? John, I need a second. Cheryl, those in favor? Approved. Approval of programs for residents with disabilities. Questions, comments? Lot of summaries there. Molly, Carol, busy. That time of the year. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Michelle, second. Joanne, those in favor? Approved. And we have an M I W with SRP. Any explanation needed, Mr. Simons?
Yes, we had a pretty significant period of time earlier in the year where everyone was driving the buses because of the impact of COVID and some of the other absences of our transportation fleet. So our head bus driver, Mr. Halsey at the time, and our senior bus driver, Carrie Ann Rudolph, were all driving the bus and Vicky Vickers, who is a secretary, was both answering the phone and responding to parents and just, and then jumping over to the dispatch station and radioing and talking with drivers and really did a nice job of managing a lot of extra work during a period of time. So we thought it was fair. SRP had asked that we consider some additional compensation for her pitching in. There were some discussions that occurred over several weeks and we thought this was a fair resolution to provide some, some extra support for Vicky.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Michelle, second. Kathleen, those in favor? Approved. Next on the agenda, committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. Our second round interviews for the athletic director position occurred on Monday, May twenty-third. And I just wanted to thank the entire interview committee for taking the time to serve on that. We've held three interviews days now. So it was a lot of, lot of time and they added a lot of value to our search. So I appreciate that. We had twelve applicants for our new E N L position, which will be initially assigned at Red Mill Elementary School. We conducted final interviews on May eighteenth and have selected a candidate. That candidate will be on the June eighth agenda for recommendation for appointment. The music position at golf is a result of Ms. LaVoy's retirement resulted in twenty-nine applicants. We held final interviews on May eighteenth and our recommendation for appointment for the music position will also be on the June eighth agenda. We have a part-time point eight Spanish position at Golf Middle School, a split between C TAP. We have three applicants for that position and Mrs. Barker is working on getting a building level interview committee to start interviews there. Our library media specialist at Belt Hop Elementary School closed. I spoke with Mr. Mahar today and he's organized his building level interview committee and we'll be starting those shortly. We have the special education new life skills position at Columbia High School. That posting closed on May sixteenth. We had fifteen applicants and Mr. Harkin and Mrs. McGrath conducted those interviews yesterday and we're working on reference checks. The administrator for transportation services, that posting closed on Friday, May twentieth. We are reposting that position through June seventeenth to widen our applicant pool. Carrie Ann Rudolph, Judy Regitano and I conducted bus aid interviews last week. We have one vacancy in the bus aid positions and we've selected our candidate. References have been checked and that individual is working on obtaining fingerprint clearance. And then we have two new individuals who are going through bus driver training with Jill Bonesteal right now. And one of those individuals has finished their hours of training and they are scheduled to take their permit test. So I wish that individual a lot of luck and we're excited to get them started. Lastly, we have our code of conduct committee that met on May eleventh and we are going to reconvene that committee for another meeting in mid-June. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Marissa. Linda, anything?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Yeah, our committee for curriculum study met on May fourth. The minutes are included. Just some highlights, our program reviews for music and alternate education were presented and endorsed by CCS. Mr. Simons has reviewed both of those program reviews. Very proud of that work. Some tremendous accomplishments have occurred. Those will be on the board agenda for June twenty-second under discussion items. I'm hopeful that our library program review will also be completed at that time. Also on the agenda is there were some new textbooks, two specifically for our curriculum equivalent class at Columbia High School and one for a senior level course, literature for young adults. All of those new texts are focused on increasing student engagement. So trying to find some literature that piques students' interest and has a little substance to it for discussion. Lastly, I just kind of want to highlight some new instructional resources that were endorsed by CCS and have enrolled out two, two resources specifically, one secret stories, which has been added to our K five classrooms. And in support of our work over the last two years, trying to focus a little more on the science of reading. We have some decodable readers for our K two general education teachers, our special education teachers, academic intervention specialists and our early intervention specialists as well as our E N L teachers. So a lot on that May agenda. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jeff?
Our committee for global education met last Wednesday. We are planning a school-wide and community-wide celebration event for next year under the theme of there's unity and community. We've had a number of conversations this year within the committee regarding the importance of valuing diversity, equity and being as inclusive as we can. But this particular project is intended to accomplish a couple of things related to inclusiveness. There's lots of divisive divisions in our country right now. There's lots of debate, argument, outright conflict happening. And we're proud of the fact that we celebrate diversity in a way that brings people together. And so I tasked the committee under Sisquatch's coordination, I appreciate that Helen is doing that for us, to pick a theme that would bring everybody together, that would be a way for us to have activities going on throughout the school year under the theme of unity and community. Selecting some books at the elementary, middle school and high school level and adult level, because we're all going to be reading books about the importance of unity. Working with our library media specialists to make those books available. And we're going to be reaching out once we have more of a concrete framework of what we want to do to community agencies, town government, police and fire departments, the libraries and trying to get everybody involved in this as a way to Uh, the libraries and trying to get everybody involved in this as a way to, A, we're coming through the pandemic. And B, celebrate the fact that we are an inclusive district, community, and we celebrate differences. But we do so in a way that brings us together. Mrs. Squatchy, since I have you here, do you want to add anything? Because you had a subcommittee meeting after my meeting. Do you want to add anything at this time? Excellent, thank you. It should be, we're probably going to start it in October with all of the busy, this of starting the new school year and.
Sure.
And probably try to run it throughout the whole year. And we're, once we have the planning, we'll be, I'll be doing some outreach to the various uh, organizations within the community.
Sounds like a ready activity and I know with things that have happened recently, like you said. You know, the things we're doing in summer school, the, you know, just working with children and families. As we evolve through the the pandemic and what's happening in the world and the country. Those things are important, you know, it all starts at home, starts with the community and uh, doing our best to support our families and kids and. The the people who live and work here, so. Good stuff. Moving on to the next item, we go to our table motions. I have none at this time. Old mem- old business board members, anything? Moving to the consent agenda. Letters A through L, any comments, questions, discussion on the consent items? No. Seeing none, any motion to approve that? John, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Addendum and no addendums this uh, this meeting, new business board members? I know Jennifer had a couple of things to follow up on that were uh, earlier. Anyone else? Moving on to our second public forum, does anybody wish to address the board? Not too many folks left. Board forum, all sort of my right with Joanne? You're good. Kathleen, anything? Jennifer? Mark? John? Cheryl and Cheryl? Can I have nothing? Uh, we do not have need for an executive session at this time, so. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mark, second. Kathleen, those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, appreciate it.